here at the Chandler Chamber of Commerce, and I want to welcome, first of all, each of you candidates, and thank you so much for being here. And I want to welcome the audience, and thank you, and please don't mind my back, but we are live, and that is the camera up there. So just a little background, the Chandler Chamber is the second largest chamber in the state representing over seventeen hundred businesses with over one hundred and seventy-five thousand employees here in Chandler. And again, I really want to thank you candidates for coming out, and your attention to public service is really, really critical as we move forward in our community. So thank you. This debate will be broadcast live on the city of Chandler's website, the city's YouTube channel, and the local Cox Communications Channel 11. It can also be found on the Chandler Chamber of Commerce website. These programs would not be possible if it wasn't for our sponsors. So please, I'd like to acknowledge Salt River Project, Southwest Gas, Chandler Independent News Media, and Cox Business, Cox Communications. Please give them a round of applause. It is now my pleasure to introduce Basia High School Junior ROT Sisters, Lillian and Kate Sackett, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and perform the National Anthem. Anthem, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the peril thus fight, for the round parts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave, o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you so much. Aren't they amazing? And that's Chandler's own. I gotta love that. It is now my pleasure to introduce our moderator for tonight's debate, Garrick Taylor. He is a well-respected public affairs consultant to clients in sectors like the healthcare industry, regulated utilities, tourism, and education. For more than a decade, he has led government affairs and communications at the Arizona Chamber of Commerce and Industries, one of the state's most prominent and most influential business advocacy groups. At all levels of government and before the media, Garrick helps the state's top employers tell their stories before elected officials, affected stakeholders, and community influencers. Garrick has worked on issue campaigns ranging from tax cuts to tort reform, healthcare, to labor policy, and everything in between. He has also managed major independent expenditure campaigns and media relations for a host of ballot measure campaigns impacting Arizona's employers. He is a graduate of Arizona State University, and more importantly, he resides right here in Chandler. Please put your hands together and welcome my friend Garrick Taylor.
Thank you, Terry. Sackett Sisters, we can't compete with that. Watch out, American Idol. Man, that was great. Well, good evening, everyone. Thanks to everyone who's watching at home, and candidates, welcome. Thanks for doing this. Want to thank you all for joining us tonight during what I know is a very busy election season for you all. Let's talk for the next few minutes about how tonight is going to work, going to go over the rules and procedures for this debate. The Good Government Committee is an integral part of the Chandler Chamber of Commerce's public policy and advocacy initiatives, and it was created for the sole purpose of candidate endorsements. The committee has created questions in a non-biased and business-oriented fashion for the purpose of defining the candidates' views on the government and its role in the business community. In answering, candidates need to provide a brief and succinct response so that the maximum number of questions may be asked this evening. Now, this forum is a civil opportunity for the candidates to discuss their ideas and philosophy on the nature of government and business, as well as the current issues that pertain to each topic. In order to fully clarify each candidate's views on specific issues, we ask that general information about a candidate's platform be laid out in an opening statement. Each candidate is going to have two minutes tonight, one for an opening, one for a closing, to use as they wish, a time to answer the basic foundational questions of their campaign, as well as their specific engagement with business in Chandler. Earlier this evening, candidates drew numbers to determine the order in which they're seated up on the dais. Candidates will provide a response to a question for a maximum of one minute. Candidates, keep an eye on the green, yellow, and red lights as you think about how you're going to pace your answer. You can also anticipate perhaps some follow-up or clarification questions from me before we move on to the next candidate. In order for us to better evaluate the candidates' positions, and for the purpose of our live broadcast, we also ask that the audience remain respectful during the debate. Outbursts, displaying of signs, comments, and all types of disruptive behavior during the forum will not be allowed, and anyone who engages in these activities will be asked to leave. Please note, tonight's questions have been compiled by the Chandler Chamber's Good Government Committee through members of our business community. To take a closer look at each of our candidates, please scan the QR code on your screen, or visit the Chandler Chamber's website for detailed candidate information. Now, this debate is only one-third of the process the business community will use in determining which candidates will receive the Chandler Chamber's endorsement. So let's get started. Candidate Joseph Yang, you're in the number-one spot, so we're going to start with you. We're going to give you one minute to begin with your opening statement. After Joseph wraps, Cicely will go to you, and then so on. Joseph, you have the floor for the next minute.
Very good. Hi, my name is Joseph Yang, and I want to thank the chamber for this opportunity to share my platform with the residents of Chandler. As we dive into some of these questions and get to share more about ourselves, I want the voters and residents to know one clear thing: my why. Why am I running for City Council? I'm running to continue serving this great city and community, the city I have grown up serving. From being the president of an advisory council for the library system, to sitting on planning committees to help plan cultural events for the city, to my current service, serving on the police commission, and working for a local police department while running a small business, I love this city and its people, all of you guys. I would be honored to have this community's trust and support to represent you on Chandler City Council. Again, thank you, and let's invest in Chandler's future together. Make sure to vote on July 30th on your primary ballot, and I'm excited for you to learn more about me and my campaign tonight during this debate. Thank you for being here.
Thanks, Joseph. Well done, and right on time. Cicely Rocha Miller, you're next.
Thank you for saying my name right. I'm Cicely Rocha Miller. Thank you to the chamber for this forum. Utilizing my eighteen years of business ownership and experience, I bring to the forefront adept budget-balancing skills, a wealth of community service expertise, and a robust communication and collaboration abilities to effectively serve our community. Furthermore, as a mother, I offer a unique perspective infused with optimism and a proven ability to navigate through adversity, taking depth, and resilience to my commitment of our community's welfare. Critical issues like investing in public safety, streamlining our business development, and encouraging community engagement must be addressed. I am grateful for the Public Safety endorsement, advocating for their resources and well-being, investing in them is investing in us. Responsible business development is crucial for economic prosperity. Partnering with the chamber, I aim to drive growth through business retention and workforce alignment. As a council member supported by many current council members, community engagement is paramount. I'll be a connector, facilitator, dialogue, and amplify our collective voice together as a member of your community. Thank you.
Thank you, Cicely. Candidate Jennifer Hawkins, you're up next.
Thank you, chamber, and thank you sponsors for tonight. My name is Jennifer Hawkins, and I'm running to be your next Chandler City Council member. A little bit about me, my husband and I have lived here for the last nineteen years. We have two kids, and we own a small business in the automotive repair space. Prior to that, my background includes construction materials management for about a decade or so. During my time here, I have volunteered for various things, various boards, booster clubs, organized valley donation events, and so forth for children's hospitals. That's just some of the ways that I've given back earlier on. And I mention this because service is a big part of my life. I want to bring that passion to council and serve Chandler because I'm invested in the community, and the way it's run, and how it affects our day-to-day life. I want to see Chandler continue to thrive and continue to be the great city that it is. And by that, my platform is keeping Chandler business-friendly. We want to focus on a prioritized budget and smart spending, as well as supporting safe communities. Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. OD Harris, sixty seconds on the clock.
Hello, everyone. I am the current Vice Mayor of the City of Chandler. I'm a military veteran, proud to have served our country, as well as I bring to the council twenty-five years of experience in accounting. That's what my background has been, and that's what I continue to open up business in. I was successful in my business, opening up thirty-five accounting firms in seven different states, and I was able to see that clientele grow to forty-one thousand. Also, I would like to share these, just some of the things that I really feel that's important. Smart investments are very important. As you will learn more today in my platform, you will learn more about parks, housing, and police and fire, and you will learn more about my platform for seniors as well as educators. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Christine Ellis, you've got the next sixty seconds.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, chamber, for organizing this. My name is Christine Ellis, and I am your current council member here in the city of Chandler. Four years ago, I sat here, and I looked into this camera right there, and I asked every single one of you to give me a chance to serve you from my heart. And almost thirty thousand people said yes to that. And I sat here every single day for the last four years, doing the work that you have tasked me to do in the area of education. I brought that here to Chandler. In the area of enriching our neighborhood, I help our police force get mental health. I support them in everything that they do. In the area of community services, I've worked to take homelessness off our streets. In the area also of going together, pushing the businesses forward, I've worked with that also to help push businesses in every area. Tonight, I'm sitting here asking you again, on July 30th, to reconsider me to be your next council member for the city of Chandler. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Candidate AJ Codorla, you have sixty seconds for your opening remarks.
All right. Hello, dear neighbors. It's great to be here with you all tonight. My name is Ajlan Codorla. You can call me AJ. And with your support, with the support of the business community, I'll be your next Chandler City Council member. I couldn't even dream of being here with you tonight when I first arrived from Istanbul to Arizona for my graduate studies as an engineer. And when I finished my studies, I already falling in love with our state, with its people, with its nature, and even its dry heat. And following a thirteen-year-long, emotional, and stressful immigration journey, with persistence and determination, I became a proud U.S. citizen. Meanwhile, I started my small business here. I met the love of my life. She's amazing. I'm so lucky to be with her. She's a public school teacher. And we purchased our home in the city, Chandler. So this city is our home, our business, our family, it's our life. This is the city that we realize our un-American dream. And that's why I'm running, to make it a little bit easier for everyone else to realize their own by investing safe and affordable neighborhoods, by supporting our local businesses, and providing greater education to our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll round out the opening remarks with Michael Simon.
Good evening, y'all. My name is Michael Simon, and I'm going to be your next City Council member for the city of Chandler. We talk about purpose and relevance, right? We all have a purpose that's relevant to who we are and what we do. And from the day I stepped on the yellow footprints in the United States Marine Corps to now, I've been a servant leader. I'm here for you. It's not about me. It's about the people of Chandler. It's about the business of Chandler. It's about making sure that we give back. From my time in not-for-profits to being a small business owner, I know what it looks like to drive every day and strive every day to do our very best for our city and for our people in Chandler. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. All right, let's move on to some questions about what's going on in Chandler. We're going to start with Cicely, then we'll go on down the line. The next question will be with Jennifer, and then so on. So Cicely, let's start with you. Should the City Council be doing anything in particular to help people who work in Chandler be able to afford to live in Chandler? And if so, give us a sense of how you plan to accomplish that.
Well, gosh, I think that's an interesting perspective to look at it as someone that is, I'm sorry, thank you. Can you hear me now? Okay, great. That's an interesting perspective to look at. Why aren't our public servants or people that are working within our city not able to live here? It is a national issue, certainly within our city, that we need to consider. There are many things, I think, that the community has to understand first, is that our city can become involved. We can offer affordable, more affordable housing options. And what does that look like? That looks like things that are no longer affordable are more accessible to our community residents. So that is something that was just launched called RAD, the AUDs, where I have a mother that is aging and needs my help, but she can't afford to live here, so she should be able to do that. So the council has done a great job already heading in that direction. And I do think, I have a sense of sadness when I hear of a police officer that lives outside of our city. So I do believe that our city can move forward with promoting that.
So I know we've hit the one-minute mark, but we have a little bit of time for clarification. So you envision maybe the city doing something specific, pursuing some policy to effectuate that?
I'm not sure about specific policy. I think that affordability throughout our state, and certainly throughout our city, is an overall issue. I think there could be some incentives or some sort of rewards programs that could be laid out.
Jennifer, you've got the question there on your screen, a question about affordability.
Thank you. As City Council, I look at it from the perspective of what's in our job. And with that, I would focus on fiscal responsibility, and also, how do we support economic growth? How do we bring in those good-paying jobs to help support that cost of living? So again, fiscal responsibility, economic growth, but also, as far as city mechanisms that we have in place, we continue to expand and diversify our housing options, utilize more of the infill projects that exist out there, and continue to look at downtown and high-traffic corridors for maybe some potential, I guess, dense property.
So Jennifer, does that mean that you would also be a supporter of multifamily projects in addition to single-family homes?
Yes, I would say based on a case-by-case basis, location, yes.
Great, very good. Councilman Harris, please.
Thank you so much. As the candidates have already kind of laid out some of my resume and some of the record that I have continued to push, yes, of twenty-seven hundred homes, we went to work right away. I understand that doing this by myself is not just a "I" thing, it's a "we" thing, and I was glad to work with staff and my fellow council members to make sure that we put forth twenty-seven hundred houses to be built. Not only that, the city of Chandler, we've identified ten locations where people who want to build, who want to add onto the housing capacity that we have, we already have identified those locations. I'm looking forward to what we're going to be able to do as we continue to build, living for our seniors, they need it, veterans need it, families, they need it, and we have a high population of single mothers that's in our community that needs that housing. They don't need it tomorrow, they need it right now. Thank you.
Councilman, what are you going to do, though, if you want to get more housing stock, but you're going to have neighborhood groups who might say, "Not in my neighborhood, not in my backyard"? How do you balance those interests?
Well, of course, we have to go out there and have the courageous conversations. We have to go out there and talk to our neighbors and help them understand that if you're heading home one day from work, and you want to stop by the local McDonald's, and it's not there because workers, key essential workers, are not there to serve you that McDonald's, then you understand the importance and the power of having people who want to live, work, and play in their community. And affordable housing, attainable housing, senior housing, veteran housing must happen, and we must stay on the pursuit to move it forward.
Christine?
Thank you so much. Yes, the city should be able to do something to help, and yes, the city is doing something. But years ago, this city decided to have a strategic plan where we were going to put things in different parts of this city. The way we do that is to work with staff to understand the zoning department is also part of that. Yes, we can readjust, we can pivot, because now, when I first came here thirty-eight years ago, we had green lands anywhere. I don't know if you all are well aware, there was only seven percent of land here in Chandler that is not totally accounted for. Out of that, there is three percent really, truly that is not. The other part is. So we really will have to listen to our community, sit down with them, start to understand where we want to go with this whole process. As far as what we've already been doing, every single day, Community Services Department, the Neighborhood Department, we are working together, and I am on a subcommittee where we are working toward that. Quality of life is very important to us here in the city of Chandler. So we continue to move these ordinances, we continue looking at code enforcement, at different things, in order for us to rally, to be able to support what you have asked of me.
The economy is a lot different today than it was just four years ago. Remote work is more common. Can you envision a scenario where you could see conversions of current commercial property or office property into residential?
Absolutely. We have tasked our Economic Development Department to start looking into and filling, because this is where we are. We are at that stage now in this city where we are looking for every sliver of land that we have to be able to do some great project. One of the things that we, mayor and council, have discussed also is for us to put something around areas that we call them opportunities areas, where we will also encourage people to come and build in those areas as the city undergird them in some different way to support that development.
Thank you. AJ Codorla, the question is about individuals who work in Chandler being able to afford AJ Kudorlu, the question is about individuals who work in Chandler, being able to afford to live in Chandler, whether the city should do anything to effectuate that?
Yes, Chandler is a successful, attractive place, so it's growing. And this success brings its own challenges. And housing is a major one. When I knock on doors every single day, I hear that housing is the first issue that our neighbors talk about. Oh, I have kids, they cannot move out. I work in Chandler, but I cannot afford to buy a house. I am retired, I'm worried about being priced out. That's the number-one issue in the people's mind. And in order to keep our city attractive for businesses, we need to provide workforce housing so people can work and live in our community. And all our elected officials in every level should be thinking about this issue and work collectively while thinking about finding solutions, being innovative, working with private sector, so that we can have sustainable and affordable workforce housing. I mean, think about urban planning, multi-use buildings, redevelopment, reuse of our areas that they can perform better. And also, let's decrease the red tape so that investments and projects will be a little bit cheaper every single day.
Just as a clarification, did I hear you say that the city should provide workforce housing? Did I hear that? And if so, what do you have in mind?
No. What I'm trying to say that collectively, we should make possible in our city that people can work and live at the same time.
Michael, the question about individuals who work in the city, being able to afford to live in the city.
The City of Chandler is an amazing, amazing city. Quality of life is actually one of my key platforms. But I think we, first of all, we talk about the general plan, right? We talk about the planets in place. And I think a lot of it's going to come down to working through that general plan and repurposing what we have available to us to be able to give the options to the individuals that want to live and work and play in this city. I think that's the key first and foremost. But I think there's enough that we can work around as a city council to be able to identify those areas and work around those areas to best fulfill the people that want to live and work here.
Michael, you touched on different types of housing. Could that also include multifamily developments, mostly apartments? Would you support that?
I think, overall, I think we have enough opportunity for growth, no matter what direction we go into, whether it's single-family, multifamily, or otherwise.
Thanks, Michael. Joseph will wrap up with you on this question.
Awesome. This is more like it. I'm used to being last because my last name is Yang, so that's befitting. So first off, this is a big concern. I think all the candidates know, as we're talking to residents, it's a big concern. People I've grown up with and a lot of families tell me that their kids can't afford to live on their own in the city that they've grown up with, and that's a big problem. And that's a big concern to me. I've grown up serving this community and I'm honored to be able to still live in this community. But there's a lot, like I know Cicely mentioned, the RAD program, programs like that, I would look at supporting those programs and making sure that we do have affordable housing. Because when I worked for the city, I know that we have, I've talked to a lot of my coworkers and they couldn't afford to live here. And just like Cicely said, there's police officers that can't live here, and that's a big concern of mine. But I know that we have, Intel has workforce housing, and I look at more partnerships like that, bringing in premier companies that can bring in workforce housing and allow their employees to work there, as well as I like looking into commercial and residential, transitioning commercial into residential. And I'd also love to look at investing in student housing, is something that I like to look at as well.
The question we posed to OD was how are you going to balance the need to increase the housing stock with existing residents who may be skeptical of that?
You know, it's all about, it's all about balance, just like you said. When we look at the housing that the city currently has in the market, it's all about looking at the numbers and trying to find the right balance. I'd have to, unfortunately, I'm sorry, I don't have the right numbers in front of me. Once I look at those numbers, it's all about trying to find the balance while listening to the skeptics and opening up public comment and hearing their concerns.
Thanks, Joseph. We're going to talk more about growth later in the evening, as you can imagine. But Jennifer, the next question is going to go to you first. What does it mean to be business-friendly? How would you exemplify that if elected?
Thank you. So business-friendly to me means that we provide a customer service level to businesses, that we set them up for the right environment, that they can successfully execute what they're trying to do. What that is, is basically, you know, I would say minimizing the red tape, making it a thriving environment, to keeping costs low for them, and really just being available for their concerns.
When you mention red tape, when you're out on the campaign trail and you talk to business owners, what do they complain about when they talk about red tape?
So I haven't had too many complaints, but I think some of that ends up being with planning and zoning, maybe not really clear direction. I think there's more clarification that needs with that, I guess would be.
Great. Thanks, Joseph. OD, when a candidate says that they're business-friendly, what should that mean?
Absolutely. What that means is that a candidate is looking for to work with, collaboration with businesses. It may be the simple things, like picking up the phone and hearing what the business is saying or sharing. Or better yet, sometimes they may need extra help, they may need another option, they may need a chamber or be pointing to a resource. You know, the City of Chandler has attempted to be friendly by making sure that we offer location options for businesses who are looking to relocate here. We have a team that's set and ready to help show them around the city and give them some extra support that they may need. Or better yet, if your business is international and you need some additional support, we have the ability to help navigate you through those sea waters, if I can say that. But one thing I love is that the Chandler Chamber is here as a major resource too, as they advocate for policies and resources. These type of platforms, this type of work is what allows businesses to say, hey, not only do they have a work in city, they have a work in chamber, so it's important for us to collaborate.
Thank you. Should the City Council be oriented toward helping businesses of all sizes, or is it better to focus towards businesses that might be larger or smaller? Do you have an approach that you like to take in that regard?
It goes all in the same pool. I may have a little bias, because I'm a small business owner myself, and I recognize the struggles that small businesses have. Like just getting, simply getting their sign put up on their building, or just simply trying to attract the right people or being in the right location. And I understand those struggles, and I think that's very important.
Thanks, OD. Councilwoman Ellis, lots of candidates say that they're business-friendly. What does that mean to you?
Well, I run, four years ago, I run on more free-market solution. So that means that everybody has a chance, everybody has an opportunity. If you make a phone call here in the city to talk about your business in less than 12 hours, you will have everything that you have asked of our employees answered to you to start your business here. We have made things online, we have application online for them to be able to do that. We work with them on every different way, questions that they have, we refer them back to the chamber when it's need to be with the chamber that they have questions. Otherwise, we see, yesterday, I was down at a business in South Chandler, I was there just to film, to be able to prop that business and bring it up. So that's what it means to me, being in the community, going daily, talking to those business owners, wanting to know what their needs are. After COVID, what did we do here? We sat right here and we decided we were going to take $9 million and put it back into the community, to our business owners. We changed code. We asked them, you can sell food and let people go and sit in the park to eat. So those are the things to me that all mean that we are receptive and we want to work with every-sized businesses here in the city.
Councilwoman, are you satisfied with the way those COVID relief dollars were deployed?
I am well satisfied, because what we charged that department was a one-page application. We're talking about red tape here, there was none. And when we were done with the first set, we came back, we said, hey, people can reapply again. And it was well-publicized everywhere, everybody was well-aware that they could do this one-page application. There were people that I sent the link to personally, myself, those who were able to get it, got it, and those who couldn't because they didn't have any employees, and those with mom and pops. We figured out another way to help them.
So Councilwoman, you're satisfied with there was enough accountability in the way those dollars were handled?
Absolutely, absolutely.
AJ Kudorlu, when it comes to being business-friendly, what does that mean?
Well, I'm a 20-year business owner in the community, and I'm dealing every day with suppliers, landlords, customers, customers, I would say. The most important part, it's about for the chamber and the council to be approachable and also reaching out to the business owners. Throughout that 20 years, I felt only one time that government in different levels was reaching out to help us, that was during COVID. That's the one time I felt, not any other time. So when I'm elected, I'll be the champions of small and local businesses, I'll be their voice here in the council, so that we can reach out to them and try to solve their issues as soon as possible with as simple as possible way.
You're a small business person.
Yes.
When you think about challenges that you face at a local level, is there something that comes to mind where you thought the city could have been more responsive? Or when you talk to your fellow small-business people, where it's a common complaint that you hear that you'd like to work on?
The common complaint for small businesses is always reaching out for the funds. It is hard, you know, they will throw a lot of obstacles to reach out to those. So that's what I would say. If we're talking about 2020 and the COVID time, there were some mistakes to be made in every level, and I seen that also in our councils. But that was, you know, it's hard to criticize them because it was a trying time for all of us. So I would say they tried their best at that day.
Thanks, AJ. Michael Simon, what does it mean to be business-friendly?
I think when it comes to people, we have, there's three important tools, right? Two ears in a mouth. And really, the ears are what you, really what you want to listen. I mean, to be business-friendly, to be a small-business owner, or to be involved in businesses, I think is key. And to retain our businesses that we have here now, I think is truly important. When we talk about relationships, we talk about relationships with the city, we talk about relationships with the chamber, those are all going to be able to allow us to grow as a city as a whole. But we have to look at all that. We have to be able to promote our small businesses. We have to be able to communicate. It's a two-way street. We have to keep that in mind, that whatever they're saying to us, we have to communicate and reciprocate right back.
And as you visit with small businesses out on the campaign trail, is there an area where you think there's room for improvement at the city level?
I think there's always room for improvement. I mean, as if you were here, I mean, even five years ago, 10 years ago, in downtown Chandler alone, just take that, just that piece, and how much it's grown and how much it's expanded, and you take, you know, pieces of, you know, West Chandler or South Chandler, there's always going to be room for improvement. But that's why it's so important to have those ears and be able to identify those pieces to get that from the businesses themselves.
Thanks, Michael. Joseph, a question about being business-friendly?
Absolutely. Being business-friendly, I see it as three things: advocacy, representation, and resource connections. So advocacy, we have to advocate on behalf of the businesses. I actually was talking with a business owner, and he was telling me about all these problems with his business. He has brick and mortar, and he was saying, oh, because of construction, they cut my power and I don't have water. And obviously, if you own a business, you know how disruptive that is. And he said that nobody would give him a response. He's called SRP, APS, he's called everybody. And I think being an advocate, if I were to hear that, I think it has more weight than just, oh, this one small-business owner is calling us, then, hey, the office of council member Joseph Yang is reaching out because one of his business owners just got his power shut off. And that's a problem. And, you know, and nobody's reaching back out to him. So I think advocacy, representation is representing them. When the chamber comes to us partnering with them and working with the chamber to bring resources also to the business. I know I talked a little about safety resources on my chamber interview, that's online. And when we need to, having a strong partnership with the chamber to refer them out to them if they need to go to advocate at a higher level of government, but doing what we can to make sure we're staying connected. And of course, listen. If you're going to be business-friendly and you're a friend of the business, you have to listen, because you listen to your friends.
Joseph, the city still has to conduct regular city business, and we have utilities that need to upgrade their infrastructure. How are you going to strike the balance between a brick-and-mortar business? Is, Joseph, they're tearing up the road in front of me, they've got fiber optics, they got sewer improvements, I can't get people in here. And yet, you owe it to your constituents, I would assume, to also ensure modern infrastructure. How do you strike that balance?
Absolutely. It's, like I said, it's always about balance. I think in this role, it's always a balancing act. If there is something that we can do, right, but also listening and just picking up the phone and saying, hey, look, this is about critical infrastructure, this is why it's happening. And I think if business owners know why it's happening, it's better than just being left in the dark and going, I don't know what's going on, but at least I can convey, hey, this is critical infrastructure, this is what's going on, this is why we need it. But if there's a way that I can help them out, I want to help them out.
If there's a major project that's scheduled, can you envision going into the city manager's office and recommending a construction schedule that causes the least amount of disruption? Or do you need to stick to what the infrastructure needs are at that time?
You know, it's all about, it's hard to answer that question because it's all about a case-by-case basis. If there's a way we can maneuver it to be business-friendly, let's do it. If not, I will personally go to those business owners and say, hey, heads up, we've got this construction planned accordingly, because I don't want to burden the city with more work than they need to, because as a city council member, I am a representative and a cheerleader for the city, if you so will. And so I will go out there to the business owners, and I will say, hey, this is happening, just make note of it and plan accordingly if you need to.
Thanks, Joseph. Cicely, we're going to wrap up with you about what it means to you to be business-friendly.
Sure. I am a business owner myself. I come from generational entrepreneurship, and so business is my life and my passion for sure. I do think that we are duplicating services as a city. I do think that we need to unite our collaboration with the chamber. I believe that they need to be an eighth council member. I think that we need to connect with them, and they should be the real go-to for enhancing business opportunity and communication. I also think we need to streamline permitting. We need to make this as easy as possible, and I think a lot of that has to do with communication. There's also grants and incentives that we can do, and I think a lot of this, going back to communication, is just about not knowing what is out there. We often have to look at business support services as well as local procurement. I'd like to see businesses that are in Chandler get first right of refusal when it comes to our projects and our potential possibilities.
When it comes to giving Chandler-based businesses that first right of refusal, do you run the risk, though, of not giving the taxpayer the best deal?
Absolutely. I think if anything, it's looking at the application process, maybe having that be an extra point system in their favor that they are local-based, but certainly looking at it from a fiscally responsible movement to move forward, because this is our tax dollars that we are spending, and we need to make sure that we're doing so wisely.
You mentioned concern about potential duplication of resources. Anything come to mind?
I think outreach, communication. I see emails from the city as well as chamber on, you know, basically the same information echoing specifically with services and training and education.
Great, thank you. Jennifer, we're going to start the next question with you. Candidates, it'll be on your screen. As Chandler nears build-out, much of the remaining land will be for infill-type projects. How do you plan to attract and retain businesses in our city as we approach build-out?
Thank you for that question. That's a great, a really great question, honestly. So obviously, as we are nearing our complete build-out phase, it gets more difficult to figure out what's going to go in those infill-type of projects. I think we work with our local partners, right? We look to people like our Economic Development to work with people like the chamber and kind of figure out what that looks like. So what we can do for that would be incentives. I think what they've done in downtown Chandler, they have an overlay to try to help make that process a little easier to renovate and update some of those things down there. So we've seen some really great things like the Hidden House, Maple House is one of my favorites. And so I think if we can continue to offer that type of working relationship with them, that goes a long way.
Jennifer, is there a type of business that you are more particularly drawn to when it comes to infill projects, that you'd like the city staff to pursue, or is it an all-the-above approach?
I believe the all-above, all-above approach would probably make sense, just because I think you're going to look at it case-by-case basis. It depends on what's around there, what, how large of a property it is, you know, and also, does it fit in the plan? So I think there's a few factors that you kind of have to look at when looking at that.
Great. And I should be chastised, I started with you, Jennifer, I'm sorry that I put you on first. So OD, you're up next. We approach build-out, how should we handle that?
Well, build-out is a very important conversation for the community and for the elected officials.
One of the things that I, I see as we approach buildout that we need to lean into it. What I mean by leaning into it is like, for instance, we have an apartment complex building coming called One Chandler, where we'll have mixed use, like retail at the bottom, housing at the top. We have some of that across the street currently right now, where we have retail at the bottom, housing at the top. The important aspect of community and being able to support that business allows for economic development to happen. Now businesses don't have to travel very far to go to their local grocery store. Why? Because it's right downstairs. They don't have to go across town to look for someone to, to print a sign because it's downstairs. We have to lean into concepts like this, and as we look at buildout, we need to be creative. And the question is, what type of restaurants, what type of things can we put in Chandler that would make people want to support as we work on connectivity, meaning a walkable, drivable, rideable space?
So you have a pretty ambitious view of what, you're, I mean, you're a budding urban planner here. So how are you gonna convince your fellow council members, not to mention the residents of Chandler, to embrace this vision?
Well, Chandler is already there. We're almost a 300,000-person city. If individuals don't understand that we're already there, we're already in urbanization right now. And what we're trying to come back is traffic. Currently right now, that's one of our biggest complaints when developments come in, is traffic. Another one, a big complaint, is water and water conservation and how those efforts will remain. So that, I'm just gonna name those two things so that way you can continue on. But I would just tell you that these are urbanization, rapid urbanization problems that we're having right now, and we're addressing each one, one by one.
Christine Ellis, as we approach buildout, what types of projects should we be pursuing?
Oh, well, you changed this question on me.
No, it's a question about buildout. You, you take it as you wish.
Take it as I wish. Well, I was gonna go more with the attract and retain. And then I'll probably go, go back to you on that one. The way we attract and retain, basically, we have been doing that. It's streamlining all our codes, enforcement, whether it's zoning, we just did that. We went through that whole process of making sure that we are not only friendly to that area. Our goal, and I believe mayor and council, our goal was to tell every department in this city, let's get to a yes. And how do we get to that yes? To communication. We sit down with them, we understand their project, we understand what they would like to do, and then where can we interface? I was in a room with over 30 loan officers who are doing huge loans here in Chandler, and also big companies. And all I heard was that, it was so amazing. The city of Chandler is the only city that they work with. When they come, they're gonna roll out red carpet. That took them all the way from the beginning of their conception of their business, all the way to turnkey. We follow through with them. We go and do things with them, whether to walk through that building, to make sure every single thing that they are signing a contract for, that they understand what kind of contract they're signing.
This type of service that you're talking about, though, do you believe that the city should train its resources on a certain type of business? Or is it all of the above, small, large?
Well, at this time for us is to look, what is it that the need, what the needs are. We always need to be doing these assessments. We're constantly doing those. Whether it's through the chamber, I hear a lot of consensus around here that there are things that the chamber does well, and there are things that the city do well. I don't see us overlapping in a lot of different ways, but I see us working together because there are certain things that the chamber is doing that the city doesn't have to do. But there are certain things the city is doing. The chamber doesn't have to do that.
So when you do your own needs assessment, what types of businesses does Chandler need as we approach?
Well, right now, in the area that we are looking for right now, we are, we are seeing a lot of industry for food, restaurants. People are asking for places to go for leisure. We are seeing, because we have a lot of big companies here in Chandler that are bringing a lot of employees from all over the world. And so we are a destination place. So we need to create areas where people can go and spend time and relax and enjoy their families, and the money that they are making, spend it right here in Chandler, nowhere else.
Ajay Kordle, you have the, you have the floor?
Thank you. When we talk about the infill type of projects, I live that to the private sector. They are creative enough, they will bring the project to the city. I see it is almost their responsibility to come up with the project. But when we're talking about infills and buildouts, I'm still going back to the housing. That's the most important need that our city needs. And, you know, we have to work on thinking about redevelopment under performing areas, thinking about maybe changing the zoning. So we have to have that sustainable workforce housing in our community. That makes it the most important part when you wanna keep growing in our city, I would say.
You mentioned there might be a need for some zoning changes. Do you have anything in mind?
What I would say, you know, you can go to light business zoning area, and you can turn into a multi-housing project where you can have businesses and community live together, something like that.
Something similar to what you heard from Councilman Harris?
Similar, yeah, yeah.
Michael Simon, you've got the, the floor here. A question about as we approach buildout.
I think one of the biggest things, I, we can't, we can't be afraid of change. We have to be able to be able to repurpose, we have to be creative in what we do and how we do it for the city of Chandler. You go back to the 10-year plan, right? Every year, 10 years, you know, that plan, as it's discussed, goes back to the residents, goes back to our people. If you look what we've done throughout the years, we've done it right here at Arizona and Frye. Repurposed the gas station into, obviously, a restaurant and coffee house. We did it at Warner and Elliott. We took the four corners and changed, repurposed it and changed it to put a school in place, but still have our retail areas. We did it at Jermaine and Gilbert. You have the forum, which all that was all, and you know, a lot of commercial and, and industrial. It's all about creativity and being able to collaborate with not only the, the council, but also the chamber, and how we can best suit the citizens of Chandler.
You know, for every large-scale project, the members of the council might think they've gotten a win, but there's going to be some constituency who feels like they were left out and their voice wasn't heard in a redevelopment project. So how do you encourage collaboration with the citizens and make sure you're capturing those opinions?
I think it goes, I think it goes back to the communication piece, being able to be able to build those relationships one-on-one. There's nothing stopping any one of us, you know, council or otherwise, to have those conversations with those business owners and be able to best suit, you know, the overall big picture. I'm a big-picture guy, and always have been for many, many years. And I think that's one of the pieces is, we gotta go back to the big picture. You know, we gotta make sure that we understand what, you know, what I believe in and what the residents believe in, which, which is, which is best for the city.
Thanks, Michael. Joseph, over, over to you. Questions about infill and approaching buildout?
Absolutely. So I wanna take a look right here back at attracting and retaining businesses. So I think the best way to attract and retain businesses is with two of my campaign priorities, actually, which is workforce development and enhancing parks and fields, investing in some programs that we have currently, like the U of A Near You Network Program. I wanna continue investing in, I know the city supports them financially. And, and, and one of the goals is to provide residents pathways for careers and help employers find the talent they need to stay in Chandler. Because if you don't have to leave Chandler to find the talent you need, then that's gonna encourage you to stay here. But also enhancing parks and fields. I know the city has several projects like extending the Tumbleweed Rec Center and Miss Gate Groves Park and several other parks. While I was working for the city's Parks and Rec Division, that's the number-one thing I always heard. We need more parks, we need more pickleball courts. That's what we, that's what the families are telling me that they want and they need. And I think that if we were to increase that, like Councilwoman Ellis said, these people, they, residents and families, they want, after they're playing pickleball, they wanna go somewhere and they wanna eat as a family. They wanna go somewhere and they wanna have leisure time with their family. When I play pickleball, I'm looking for somewhere to eat, and I think that's what's gonna attract businesses.
You mentioned workforce development. So what do you envision the council's role in doing that? Do you envision the council helping employers find talents to fill that, that talent pipeline?
To some degree. I think the best way that we can do workforce development is take some of the programs that we have right now, like the Leaders in Training Program, Mayor's Youth Commission, Chandler Police and Fire Cadet Programs. All great programs that I've gotten to witness firsthand, taking those, making them more, I forgot my pen, making them more robust. And, and, and making it a more of a pool for people to, to look at future employees and, and start harboring that work ethic and letting the businesses and the chamber know, hey, we're making our CTE programs more robust, and we're developing the workforce. Come to Chandler, take a look at our programs, and maybe find a few great future CEOs in our mix.
Thanks, Joseph. Cicely, you'll close us out with this question. Go ahead.
Oh, this is a fun question because I've got lots of ideas. First and foremost, we have to get creative because we do have a lot of availability with, with our buildings. So this is, this is my jam for sure. Certainly, we call ourselves a city of innovation and technology, and I believe that we can do better. I believe that there are resources out there where we can excel in technology, and I don't think that there, we're quite representative of our, of our name just yet. I also agree with, with Joseph is that we need to focus on the workforce development. Our kids are now, I mean, in all transparency, I just paid off my student loans three years ago. So college is no longer a necessary path for students anymore in our work, in our future workforce. We need to look into vocational and, and training here, vocational and training tech schools here. How can we bring that here so we can develop our, our future workforce? And last but not least, I know that we're all frustrated, we have to put some money into our roads and certainly prioritizing our infrastructure projects. It is very frustrating, and I, and I know that if I had someone that I was showing around that I would want to do business here, I would be embarrassed at all the construction that we have going on right now. So I think we have to communicate as a city, as a council, with our zoning, with our, with our vendors to, to do a better job at collaboration with timing.
You mentioned things like career and technical education. Typically, that's in the domain of your community colleges, in your J-TED districts. Why do you want the city involved in that? And if so, how would the city involve itself?
Well, that's, that's easy because our city is our workforce. Those, those are, those students and those young people are becoming our entrepreneurs. Those are the ones that are gonna bring the economic opportunities to our city. So if we're able to bridge those, those gaps, if we're able to connect with our chambers, if we're able to connect with our institutions, we can then invest in the community, and in turn, they will invest in us.
Great, all right. Next question. OD Harris, we're gonna start with you. What do you believe is the biggest concern or issue facing public safety today? And what specific ideas, if any, do you have to address those concerns?
Thank you so much for asking the question. When I first got on council, one of the committees I was assigned to was public safety. And the first thing I did inside of that committee meeting was to say yes to having more public safety officers. We had not hired the appropriate amount. One of my biggest concerns in terms of, you know, making sure that we continue to keep our, our public safety strong is making sure we have enough men and women there to continue to navigate the growing population issue that we have right now. Currently, right now, in public safety, we're a great city, we're safe. But one of some of my biggest fears and concerns is if there, if there is something, a mass shooting happening in Intel or a mass shooting happening somewhere else, that we may or may not have enough officers. So making sure that we're keeping public safety and making sure that we have the right amount of individuals here hired for work is very, very important. So I'm endorsed by public safety because of the ideals that we have to continue to work together as a military veteran.
You spoke about the budget piece of it. You still have got to convince somebody to go into this line of work. So how do you recruit more officers?
I think what, what we're doing right now, we're, we're actually going into other communities. We're putting out, we're putting out the benefits of what Chandler is. Chandler is a safe city. Chandler continues to have low crime in the nation. Highs are priority one, crimes are very low. We continue to understand the importance of educating our, our residents and getting involved. Our officers continue to have constituency meetings. So if there is an individual or a group that wanna meet with our officers, they will meet with you. And the last thing is that we continue to make sure that we emphasize the safety around school zones. Our officers are constantly out there, working with our schools to make sure that safety around school zone is very important, and that's something that I've been really pushing, and also making sure mental health is important as well.
Thank you. Christine Ellis, question about public safety?
When I talk to the men and women in uniform, not the union, but the people that are out there doing the work, including some of the officers that are members of the union, what I'm hearing is that they want to make sure that they go back to their families safe at night, every night. They want to make sure they get there safely, whether it's fire or police. And so what we have done here, since I have come here, is provide an environment where every single thing that they have ever bought before us, as the platform, asking for, that they receive it, in order for them. So the concerns that they are facing, we are addressing them as they come to us as a need. Which, how do we do that? We are the fourth-largest first city who have already fully paid our pensions for our police and fire. Fully funded. The last 75 millions that we needed to put in there, we throw it in there. When I came in, we put 50 million, and then we continued to do that. So they are fully funded. So now, all we have to do is just mint in their pension, every single one of them. We took care of them in that sense, to make sure that those concerns that they had, that if anything happened to them. Concerns about having cancer, we put things into place where they can go and get complete checkup to make sure that...
Am I gonna jump in, or they're, they're gonna give me the hook here? Is, you, you mentioned the things you've done on the pension side. But how does that affect your residents? And most importantly, is Chandler a safe city?
Chandler is a safe city, correct. When the, the, it has been done, it shows that we are one of the safest city to live in. I lived here for 38 years. There was not a night that I have been here that I go to bed, I don't feel safe in this city. I raised a black male son here in this city who tend to drive fast. There was not a night that he was out there, that he didn't come, he did not come home to me safely. And I was never even intended to be on council. That's me as a resident here in Chandler. I run a multimillion-dollar business here in Chandler. I used to own 19 houses for assisted living with patients who have Alzheimer's and dementia. And one thing that I knew that was a need for the department. When I came, I put my weight behind it, which was to give them a mental health unit so that when one of my patients will go on the street, as an alzheimer patient, they will understand how to deal with that particular patient, and we have that right now.
Thank you. Ajay, your thoughts on public safety?
Well, you ask about what the biggest issue that people are talking about. I would say that it's the teen violence and the horrendous attacks by the Gilbert goons. And that, since that issue hit the airwaves and the press, have become the number-one concern that our neighbors was telling me about on their door. People are worried about their kids being safe, their friend's house, at the parties, even on the parking lots. And, you know, we are fortunate enough that these attacks didn't happen within the city borders thanks to good work of our law enforcement. But as a council member, I will communicate the very important and essential nature of this problem to our PD and work with them so they have the resources that they need to, to keep this problem at bay in our city. And I must say that last week, we had a Chandler event the other day, and our new police chief was on top of this issue, and he was talking about how important that it was. And I'm in support of what's coming up in our council that they are thinking about preventing unruly parties, banning brass knuckles, and I'm in support of that.
So just to clarify, if there were an ordinance, a proposal to come before you to ban brass knuckles, you would vote in favor of that? On this, on the issue of parties or large gatherings, your position is?
Well, there should be more parental responsibility out there.
Is there anything that Chandler did or could do to ensure that what happened in Gilbert and Queen Creek doesn't occur here? Or did Chandler just get lucky?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't wanna call they just got lucky because our law enforcement was working hard diligently on that one. But I would say that the way to rein into this kind of problems will increase the communication within the neighborhoods. So if these police officers and public safety members are in good relationship with the community, if they know what's going on, they are in almost like a first-name basis, they can solve the problems much quicker, in my opinion.
Michael Simon, question about public safety?
So again, actually, one of my platform items is public safety. And when you talk public safety, you know, both our police and our fire, I always go back to the, the military. You know, and making sure you have the, the proper equipment, you're modernized. And of course, first, you know, first and foremost, you're staffed. You have the, the ability to be able to go out and complete whatever mission is, is your task with. It's the same thing for our public safety. We wanna make sure that we have the resources, we have the staffing. Not only the staffing, but it kind of dovetails into being able to utilize other resources within the city of Chandler. You know, whether it be our navigators, or whether it be something within neighborhood resources, being able to collaborate and work together to address concerns of, you know, mental health or public safety, making sure that we, you know, we continue to keep the city safe. Our facilities, making sure that, you know, our facilities are up to date, you know, they're modern. Our technology is modern, our trading is modern. Everything we can do to, to best facilitate our, our residents here.
You mentioned your concern about staffing levels. Do you have an opinion about today's Chandler Police Department and whether it's properly staffed?
I think it, I think for what we have and what we do, it's, I go back to the military again. You work with what you have to the best of your ability. Could you always improve? Yes. Could you always improve staffing? Yes. Can you always improve technology? Yes. We can, we, we need more officers. There's no question about that. We need more firefighters and paramedics. There's no question about that. The more staff we have, it gives us the ability to give our officers and our firefighters breaks, you know, to give, give time off for their families, to better come back and make sure they keep their mental health stable and consistent.
Thanks, Michael. Joseph Yang, a question about public safety?
Absolutely. So I think it depends on how you're asking this. So if you, if, I think the biggest issue facing the community in terms of public safety is cybercrime. I mean, we're in a new age of crime. You could be cooking dinner for your family downstairs, and your child could be with a predator upstairs, online, and you wouldn't even know it. That's, I think, what's the biggest thing that's affecting our community, and I think... And I think that the police department is working on various ways to address it. I know they've got various task forces as well. But if you want to ask about what's facing public safety as in the department, I think it's recruiting and mental health. And I know that Chandler is doing a nationwide recruiting. They go to various communities, like Vice Mayor said, and they're going to various states. And I think that continuing that, but also continuing Chandler, investing in our public safety, looking at different things. I know I've been looking at the numbers and I think that one thing I did mention that I'd be interested in looking into would be making ourselves, getting our own detention facility. Scottsdale, who is a smaller city than us, has their own detention facility and I've talked to some of the officers there and they love it. They think it works, it it works for them and it and it's made their city a hair safer. And I and I'm interested in looking at stuff like that and always innovating and continually making our police department better.
Joseph, would you say that cybercrime is a bigger issue facing this city than things like teen violence or organized retail theft?
In my opinion, yes. I do believe that that is, because you may not even know that it's going on. There are these crimes that are unreported because their children are embarrassed. They're scared. They don't want to report it. And I think that I've talked to and I've gotten to see and get a presentation from the SRO School Resource Officers, and they're doing phenomenal work in our schools. They are building connections and making kids feel safe and making kids feel comfortable with coming to them and reporting crimes. And I'm truly impressed by what they're doing. And I think the work that they do in the schools has mitigated some of that teen violence that we're seeing in other communities. And I do think that cybercrime, because it affects everyone of all ages.
Thanks, Joseph. Cicely, over to you, a question about public safety.
Here we go. Excited to talk about public safety. I am so proud of our firefighters and our police officers that are out there now. We have a 98% approval rating within our city for the work that they have done. I take it as a big compliment that our new chief has moved here to Phoenix, or from Phoenix to Chandler. And he said if it wasn't Chandler, it was it was not going to be anywhere else. So that's a big compliment. I do now know now that we are understaffed. We have a goal of 353 officers and we are short by that. I want to say around at least 20 of those. And we are also on the cusp of a major retirement option for many of our officers where they are looking to retire, they are looking to be done with this. They have put in the time and by their grace, they're continuing with their service. So we do have to look at what can we do to have competitive initiatives to be able to sit to, what's the word, to compensate people to move to our Chandler? What brings us, what brings us more investment to our community? I also think we need to focus on the well-being, not only of our officers, but of their families. Like, like Councilmember Ellis said, we need to look at the mental health of of our, certainly the people that they are working with, but themselves and extend that. They are coming home and they are nervous for their officers to also come home.
I'm going to, I'm going to jump in here as you hit the the minute mark because you talked about your concern about retirements and not having enough staff levels.
Yes.
What can the city council do to convince people to go into this line of work and do it in Chandler?
Well, I think, I think we have an excellent city. So I think we are attracting better. But I do believe we need to up the, the, what's the word I'm looking for? The specific lateral compensation to bring people here. It's not so much how much they're getting paid annually, it's the bonus structure of bringing them. I do believe that we are not competitive enough with that.
Great. Jennifer, we'll wrap up this round with you, your thoughts on public safety.
Thank you. Yes, so police are our top priority. Public safety is huge. We have great police, great firefighters, and we have safe communities, which is huge here. It helps a lot when we're looking to bring in additional, you know, economic development companies that want to come here. That's a big factor, right? So I would say that one of my concerns for public safety at this point is, like Cicely mentioned, is we need to be investing in recruiting and retainment and also the the technology that we provide them. And I see that because, again, we are short-staffed. We need to be able to provide breaks and mental health, I guess, again, breaks to allow them to have that kind of sanity back in their life for a little bit and not with the fear of not being able to provide the daily, so to speak. So I guess, again, going back to, it would be investing in recruiting, retention of officers, and how do we put that nice incentive package to, obviously, we provide a great environment for them here, but what else can make us competitive?
All of you have touched on recruitment and pay. Joseph, though, talked about cybercrime. Is cybercrime the top public safety issue facing Chandler?
That's a beast, yeah. I think that's everywhere, though, right? I think it's not a new issue, but that is certainly something that, you know, we've been trying to get a handle on for a very long time. And it just continues to evolve.
All right. Question five. Christine, we're going to start with you. It's on your screen there. The Chandler City Council races are nonpartisan and they're meant not to be political in nature. Do you consider yourself as someone who's willing to compromise with people you disagree with or do you stick to your positions? Give us an example.
Thank you so much. I think I've lived that the last four years. And not only that I have shown it across the aisle in every which way. Every year, we in Washington DC, I'm in everybody's office advocating for the people of Chandler. And I think if you're looking for someone who truly is bipartisan, you will have to look at me because I'm not afraid of other people and what they're going to say about where I stand and who I talk to. From the time I came into this office, I sat here and I said I was going to work for the people of Chandler, none else. And that means 287,000 of them.
And do the 287,000 people of Chandler, again, just to go back to the question, do you consider yourself someone who strives to reach compromise? Or are you more likely to stand with the position you've started?
On this council, when I came and working individually with each one of these council members, I always take this point of view. Why have a four-three when you can have seven-zero through communication with each other? And so that's my point of view and that's what I have done. I create an environment where I'm open. I have an open door policy. Every one of my colleague can walk in and sit down and talk to me. When I go into the community, I talk to everybody, whether they're to the left or to the right and whatever the situation is, because I concentrate solely mainly on issues. What is the issue? Is this affecting your quality of life and can I do something about it?
AJ Kudurlu, you've got the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Garrick. We're talking about consider yourself if you're willing to compromise. As I mentioned earlier, I moved to this country from Istanbul. And when you move here as an adult, you have to start from scratch to build your community. And I started a small business. So in that nature, I had to make connection, build bridges with anyone and everyone, regardless of their background. I know how to work with people and find positions that we can connect and move forward just to get the job done. And I would say that will be one of my great qualities that I will bring to this council.
And when you think about public feedback here at this podium, speaking to the council, is that something you encourage or does it just promote conversation that really doesn't amount to much?
I will promote it, yes. It is important for us to find ways that we can connect. Again, you know, as a small business owner, I work with so many people. And now that I am more involved for the last 10 years with the local affairs, people get to talk to me about the issues. And then sometimes realize we're agreeing on 95% of the stuff and only 5% that we are different. And then we can still do the work. That's the important part.
Thank you. Michael Simon, you're up next, question about how you're going to approach this job.
So absolutely, there's always going to be a willingness to compromise. One of the biggest things for me, you know, I go back, number one, to, you know, my leadership skills and my my qualities. And qualities, of course, when you come, when it comes to the military, especially the Marine Corps, is the ability to not only listen, open up dialect, I think is key, to make sure you understand everything that's coming in your direction. But when you talk about, you know, examples or sticking to or having an example, I go back to the American Legion where, you know, just one year ago, I was the leader of the entire American Legion for the state of Arizona. And you're talking about different personalities, you're talking about different walks of life from one corner to the to the next in the state of Arizona. And there's a lot of compromise, but the greatest thing about what we do and how we do it, even in the city council, is there's a common goal, right? There's always going to be a common goal. So for like the American Legion, it's obviously our veterans and our community, making sure that we can go to the legislation legislators, go to DC or otherwise, and making sure that we have, we have a voice, not only for the people, but the people have a voice back to us.
Is that, so would that be fair to say then? You you encourage the public to make its voice heard in council chambers and to testify and to speak out on issues?
Absolutely. I think every, I mean, every resident has a voice. I, you know, I have a voice, you have a voice. I want to make sure that I have an open door policy and I want to make sure that I have the dialogue with the residents of the city of Chandler, just along with the rest of the city council members.
Right, thanks, Michael. Joseph, over to you.
You know, I am always open to compromising. If there is a compromise there to be made, I will work with you to make that compromise. However, if I, if there is something that I'm passionate about or I believe in, I will stick to my guns. I can't be, my vote can't be bought and my vote can't be intimidated. However, my door is always open. I like the open door policy. If I vote on something or I disagree with you and I vote a certain way, I will always talk to you. I will answer your phone calls. Same thing at all levels of government. Doesn't matter if you have an R, D, I, or a G next to your name. I will answer your call and I will at least talk with you. That's the least I can do. Same thing where if you don't vote for me, I still represent you. Pending I win, I still represent you, even if you don't vote for me. And the thing about that is there's always a middle ground. We can always meet in the middle. And if we can't, the least I can do is hear you out. That's the least. And I know Councilmember Orlando, when we were voting on the Circle K, he said, you know what? Some of you are going to walk out with an outcome that you don't agree with. However, like he said, I will always answer your emails, answer your phone calls, and I'll always talk to you.
When it comes to making a determination how you're going to land on an issue, who are you going to seek out for credible information? Or how will you weigh competing opinions?
Talk to everyone. Talk to, you know, I was always taught that there's three sides to story. There's the person A, person B, and there's the truth somewhere in the middle. You know, it's all about talking to everyone, the people that don't disagree, the residents of Chandler, and I'm going to use Circle K because I think that's the one that's fresh on my mind. Talking to the residents, talking to stakeholders, as well as talking to the city staff and getting the worldwide view instead of just listening to one, one perspective and making sure that I listen to a diverse, a group of of residents so that we can get all the, all the feedback.
Thanks, Joseph. Cicely, do you consider yourself as someone who's willing to compromise with people you disagree with?
No.
Or do you stick to your position?
I am definitely someone who likes to listen and understand. I think one thing that we really need to continue to do and that I really feel like I've dove in more since, since COVID, you know, the the things that we wish whatever never happen are truly gifts. I say that, that's my mantra every single day. And because of that, it has made me stop in my tracks and maybe made me connect with people and to listen to their experiences, to understand the diversities and inclusion that is important to them and to understand why they got to where they are thinking. How did they get there? And I think having those conversations are so important because that's when compromise happens. We are stern on a specific reason or specific solution or ideology because of our own experiences. But once we open up and listen to people that have other opinions that are not like our own, we will soon feel, like, just like AJ said, that we are much closer in 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 what we want as a community that that than than more alike.
Cicely, sometimes what you'll hear from constituents, though, is frustration, which is, well, Cicely says she wants to compromise. But the problem is, I don't know where she stands on any of these issues. So how, how do you convey where you're going to stand on an issue when you're going to stick to your guns to your constituents?
Well, I think at the end of the day, when we, hopefully, I'll be sitting at this seat, it comes to a vote. It comes to public opinion. I mean, that is on record. You know, what we are saying is, is here. So there's only so many conversations that we have. There's only so much time. We can't talk to every single person. But what we can do is we can focus on as many residents as possible, as many stakeholders as we can, as many city staff and and other officials that we can to go with our best judgment and and based off of your vote in that faith in us to carry that through.
Thanks, Cicely. Jennifer, you're up next.
Thank you. So, yeah, I absolutely consider myself someone who's willing to compromise. You know, I think everybody comes to the table with their own experiences, their own backgrounds, skill sets, et cetera. And that's what makes their their position unique. I'm obviously not going to be right 100%, but I'm going to do my part to to get educated and be informed. And I think if everything aligns with my values, like I can certainly see value, see the value in working with others to find, at the end of the day, what's good for Chandler. That's going to be our focus and our goal, right? So I think most of us are in that kind of middle ground that we, we want to have, you know, common sense communication and see that that's ultimately what plays out. So for me, one of my core responsibilities is being, is building meaningful relationships. And so with that is, it's key to have those communication talks and and find out what's important to our community. So I think ultimately, yeah, I can have those conversations. I can change a decision and and as an example, if anyone has kids, you know what negotiation looks like.
That's right. What do you do if you're excited about a project, you like to see it approved, but you're not hearing anything to support your point of view on this and your voicemail box is just loading up with angry constituents? You've got an email inbox that's full. How do you reconcile that?
Ultimately, at the end of the day, it's, it's not what's good for me. It's not my wants and wishes. It's what's good for the city and what they want.
Does that mean that volume matters? That if more people just happen to land on one side in communication, that you're going to side with that?
Not necessarily. I think if it's something big, that's something that the city can work on communication outward so that we get more feedback, not just the parties that are sort of paying attention.
Councilman Harris, we'll, we'll wrap up with you about this question of compromise versus sticking to your position.
Thank you so much for the question. Yeah, 25 years I've been in business, my life has been about courageous conversation. And even as the current Vice Mayor of the city of Chandler, there's things, there's elements that I take to the table, openness, empathy, active listening, and respectful communication. I'll give you an example. The NDO, the nondiscrimination ordinance that was looking to get passed in the city of Chandler, that was something that I actively worked on. There was people torn on both sides. But what we did as a city, we was able to put together a scientific method, working with collaboration with our chamber. We put it out in the community and overwhelmingly, over 90% of our residents said, yes, we want a nondiscrimination ordinance. Yes, I wanted it 100%, but yet I also had to recognize there was, there was this divide in the conversation. So I wanted to, I took a step backwards. I implemented our constituents, the people of Chandler in the chamber, to create a collaborative conversation. And we got that passed 7-0. And no, I don't think that the city council should be politically led. It should be pure to what it is, working for the people.
I'm going to pose a follow-up to that I posed to Jennifer. What do you do when there's a lop, when you're getting a lopsided opinion versus, and it, and it doesn't, you can't reconcile with your own views. What do you do? Is it all just, I'm going to side with the loudest voices or you're going to stick to to your guns in the position that you believe in?
I deal with that every day now. It's called a courageous conversation. You cannot be nervous and you cannot, as a leader, you cannot back down from a conversation that you know that potentially could go left or right. You must remain strong. You must share your position. You have to be open to sharing your position so that way you can get feedback and so that way they can have a dialogue with you. But you sharing or keeping what your personal thoughts are and afraid of having a difficult conversation, that's not leadership. That is following. And as a leader, I'm willing to share my thoughts, put it on the table, and I'm willing to listen to your thoughts. And at the end of the day, when we get done having that conversation, as a leader, we're going to walk away with a conversation that's, that we're both going to agree, even if it takes all night to get there.
Thanks, Councilman. All right, we just ended with OD here. You know, I can, but yeah, I can, I can feel Terry's eyeballs boring in the back of my head here, but I, it's 6:50, so we're going to, we're going to do one more question, all right?[1706.74] so we're going to do one more question, all right? Okay. So I am going to start with you. Have I, sorry? No, I'm going to start with AJ. Yeah, yeah. Is there a policy issue about which you once held a position, but then changed your mind after hearing new information and opinions?
I would say yes. I would say yes to this question. As a science person, as an engineer, you have to have an open mind and get all the facts and data. And then you form an informed, and you make an informed opinion, I would say. Is there a specific policy issue that, I would say, like right now, I'm thinking about, again, going back to housing, I was thinking about if we're going to change the view of the city with, you know, from single-level houses to multi-use projects. You know, as someone who is living in a single home, I'm comfortable out there, but the needs of the community requires, that needs to change slowly but surely. So I'm open to new ideas. Comes with the new data when it's present.
Michael Simon, we're playing a bit of a speed round here.
No worries. I can go probably a couple of different directions. I can go the commission direction. I'm on the Military Investment Affairs Commission, where I currently hold the chair, Vice Chair. But we're always collaborating. We're always sitting down and talking. So I think a lot of times, when we get together and brainstorm, you know, you go in the room, you know, feeling this way, or going one direction. And then as you kind of talk more and talk more, you're like, okay, I get that piece, I understand that piece, and I kind of shift a little bit. And I think the same way in our veterans' community as a whole, being, you know, obviously, not-for-profit organization that helps our community and our veterans, it's the same thing. We're always dealing with change in policy, change in direction based on, you know, obviously, was it two years ago, three years ago, five years ago? But yeah, I think I'd always be open-minded to, obviously, new information and making a shift if it makes sense for the overall big picture.
Thank you. Joseph, you ever change your mind on a position?
Absolutely. So I'm going to, I mentioned this earlier today, that's why I'm going to bring this specific one up. But having Chandler have a standalone detention facility for our city, for the PD, and that's something that I have gone back and forth on variously. And that's why earlier today, I couldn't give that firm, oh, I would support it. I said I'm looking into it, and I would look into investing, because I'm talking to officers in Scottsdale that have one. I'm looking at officers in other cities, in our city, talking with them. And I've gone back and forth. There's a lot of people that say it's good, there's a lot of people that say it's bad. And so this is one policy issue specifically that I like to hear from people, and I like to form an opinion before I say, oh, yeah, I would support that. Because I'm never going to go gung-ho on something before listening to people and the residents of Chandler, and people who have firsthand experience. I may be even grabbing two people, three people, that I know disagree with each other, and listening to both their sides, obviously not at the same time. But that's what I would look at. That's one thing that I would use as an example.
Thanks, Joseph. Cicely, do you ever change your mind?
Of course. I think that's such as life. We grow, we educate, we talk, we communicate. And I think it's a very natural thing to do, is to evolve.
Great. Thanks, Cicely. Jennifer, you're up next.
Yeah, I'm going to echo what Cicely mentioned, is basically, you know, we're all human. We have our positions, and hopefully, most of us are able to adapt once we learn more information and that you get a little bit more educated. I think that we can appreciate that about everyone.
Councilman, you face some tough issues where you might have had to think through your previous position. What's your answer?
Rethinking my position right now. The same. This is not easy. I'm thinking about the countless meetings that I had to go through, just in terms of trying to work through the unruly ordinance that we have coming up to about teen violence. How do I want to address that? At one point, I wanted to address it with the iron fist, but then I decided that I would attempt to address it from a community collaboration and a listening perspective. Because your first initiative is, I want to go in there and take care of it and send the boys in and take care of things. But then the second part of you is like, I need perspective, I need understanding, and I need to think this through. And so, yes. And I'm looking forward to passing unruly, the unruly ordinance on Thursday.
Thank you. Christine, you're next.
Yes, absolutely. I'm a mother, so I'm allowed to change my mind. So I brought that same perspective here. When we were thinking about the, you know, the nondiscriminatory ordinance, that's something I was passionate on. I ran on embracing diversity. Council member Harris also was running on diversity, and I wanted to push that forward. But then he came out with it prior to me. And we had to find a way to embrace both sides of the story. For me, it was more, I wanted it to be more educational. I wanted people to understand the process, because a piece of paper was not going to do anything for none of us by sitting it on a shelf. I wanted us to have something where we can do something with it. If someone did something to me, I had a process that I could go through, not to get a resolution. So what I ended up doing was, I advocated with my council members and the mayor, for us to hire a consultant. Let's do a survey. Let's go out there. If something is not broken, then let's figure out, if it's broken, let's fix it. If it's not, then we can't. But what did we do? We hired a consultant, and they came here, and they told us that 13% of people that work here at the city felt that we could do better. And that's exactly what we did.
Thanks, Councilman. Well, you did it. You got through that round of questions. So thank you, everyone, for doing this. Yeah, give them a hand, please. Go ahead. You did it. We're going to end with our 60-second closing statements. We started the evening with Joseph, so we're going to end the evening, we'll start this round with Michael Simon. You've got 60 seconds.
I want to say this. It's service before self. I told you before, and I said it earlier, it's not about me. It's about what we do and why we do it, the passion for what we do. So keep that in mind, you know, in the next several months, when, you know, when you look for, when we get out there and look for votes and we seek votes and seek support, that we want to make sure that everything we do, we do for the people and themselves. Obviously, if you have questions, comments, concerns, you can always go to mikeforchandler@gmail.com or mikeforchandler.com.
Great. Thank you. AJ, you're up next.
Thank you. Thank you for this wonderful evening, I would say. Thank you, Garrick. Chandler, this community is my life. Living here for 18 years, have a business for 20. Our family, our business, and our dreams are here. And I know that realizing your dream and reaching your potential depends where you live. If you're lucky enough to live in a place, in a city, that provides safe and affordable neighborhoods, if you live in a community that supports small and local businesses, and if you live in a community that provides great public education for our families, you'll have a better chance to realize your dream. And that's why I am in this race. I am so excited to have a chance to make Chandler the best that it can be. A city that is more inclusive, more welcoming to everyone, where everybody has a voice regardless of their background. A city that everyone will love to move and start their family whenever and however they would like to do. And a city that families can get great public education as free as possible. A city where everyone will love to start a business, invest, and create great jobs, and retire in dignity while enjoying the quality of this city can offer. My name is AJ, and I'm running to be your next Chandler City Council member, so that everyone will think about Chandler when they think about the state of Arizona.
Oh, my gosh. Thank you. Christine Ellis, 60 seconds.
Thank you, sir. 38 years ago, I moved here in Chandler with nothing. My husband and I, my husband was here working, came here to help open the first Intel plant here in Chandler. We met in an airport in Texas. We got married off State New York. We honeymooned in the Grand Canyon, and we've been living here in Chandler ever since. We started, I brought four boxes of shoes with me. He had one aquarium and a Buñuel Mazda. We lived here in Chandler for the last 38 years. We built a life here. My son was born at Chandler Hospital, one of the first to be born in that birthing center. I've worked here, I've played here, and I buried my son at the same cemetery, right here in Chandler, two years ago. The next day, I was here at work. My commitment for this city is visible to you. I've been working hard and continue to push through in everything that I do. And right now, I'm sitting here to ask you, on July 30th, consider me again for your next council member in the city of Chandler. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine Ellis. OD Harris, 60 seconds on the clock.
Thank you so much for this amazing opportunity, and thank you to my colleagues who sit to my left and to my right for an amazing conversation. These are the courageous conversations that I talked about. My candidacy has always been about seniors, families, veterans. And one of the things that I pride myself is the 25 years of business experience through accounting and as well as my experience understanding this work that I'm doing. And to be elected to be the vice mayor to represent this great city has been such an incredible, rewarding experience. I'm truly humbled with the opportunity to speak between, speak to each one of you all, and I'm looking forward to getting to know each one of you guys as we get further down the campaign trail. And I look forward to your vote, July 30th. Keep the city of Chandler moving forward. You already like what you see and feel. Keep it moving forward. Keep voting for me, and I appreciate you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Jennifer Hawkins, close this out.
Thank you, chamber and sponsors for tonight. It's truly been an honor. I also want to say thank you for my family for being so supportive. I know it's difficult when candidates are gone often. So thank you and for all of my volunteers. I am excited for Chandler. Chandler is on the right path. We are doing so good. We have such a great quality of life here that we offer. So I want to bring my passion, my commitment, and integrity to further support that effort. I, again, I'm excited to serve the families and the businesses of Chandler. So again, if you'd like to learn more about me, my website is jenniferforchandler.com, and I'm asking for your vote on July 30th. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Cicely Rocha Miller, 60 seconds.
I want to express my heartfelt appreciation to our moderator, the Chandler Chamber, our sponsor, our sponsors, and the invaluable endorsements from both the fire and police departments and several of our current council members. Your belief in me is truly humbling. However, my deepest gratitude belongs to my family, my partner and our two children, Aniston, celebrating her 12th birthday today, and Joey, being inducted into the National Honor Society tonight. With their unwavering support, I am determined and committed to serving our community and making them proud. My work is for our families. I have an unshakable faith in Chandler, the strength of our residents, the excellence of our schools, and the resiliences of our business. To those who have accompanied me on this journey tonight, and to those watching at home, I am Cicely Rocha Miller, and I'm filled with excitement of the prospect of representing this wonderful community. Connecting with you personally is paramount for me, which is why I extend a personal invitation to discuss your concern and aspirations for Chandler. I want to be your resource and representative for decisions that impact you alongside you. As we approach July 30th, I humbly ask you for your vote, eagerly anticipating opportunity to serve for your Chandler Council member, and I thank you for the opportunity and for the endorsement.
Thank you, Cicely. Joseph, you're the last speaker this evening. Go ahead.
All right, perfect. So obviously, with this debate, it's clear that this city is in great shape. No matter who wins, our city is in great hands, and I would be honored to work with any of these fine people. You very rarely hear me refer to any of these fine people as opponents, because I consider them my fellow candidates, because these six people are here doing what they believe in and wanting to work towards their vision for Chandler's future. All I'm asking you for is one of your votes to allow me to serve and represent you on the Chandler City Council. You can count on me to work tirelessly for our community, because I have always worked tirelessly for a better Chandler. I will work diligently to keep Chandler a premier place, to raise a family, and to live, work, and thrive. I'm happy to meet and talk with our residents. If you're watching and you have more follow-up questions or want to invite me to speak or meet your neighborhood, do not hesitate to reach out. I give my phone number to anyone who wants it. My personal line is 480-788-3502. Again, that's 480-788-3502. And my website is yang.vote. That's Y-A-N-G-v-o-t-e, which are the only two things you need to remember about this election cycle, is yang and voting. When you're filling out your primary ballot on July 30th, let's invest in Chandler's future together. Thank you. Good night.
Thanks, Joseph. Well, we did it. Thanks to our sponsors, our participants, and of course, the audience. I want to thank all of you candidates for taking time out of your evening to join us to talk about the issues that are relevant to the business community. We couldn't do this without you, but we also couldn't do it without Salt River Project, Southwest Gas, the Chandler Independent News Media, and Cox Business. Without their contributions, this event would not be possible. Thank you again for joining us for the city council candidate debate. Please visit the Chandler Chambers website for more information, and remember to vote on July 30th. Thank you, everyone. We did it. Thanks.